One TV Special Report
Three instruction rate, the rate of measure at which water is grown from its natural source in meters per second. Water be prepared should mean a motorized pumps with high extraction rate used in the diversion of water from its natural source. Five PD 127, the water flow to Philippines. Six in WRB, the National Water Resource Board. Seven DPO, the Business Permit and Licensing Office. Eight, the water right, the privilege, want to be the government to operate and use water. Please shall be evidence by document known as your water permit. Nine, water permit, a document issued by the in WRB to private entities, government-owned, ergotrope corporations, which give them the right to operate water for its beneficial use. Ten, the commercial use shall mean the procurement, supply, delivery, distribution, and selling of water to consumers. Eleven, industrial use shall mean the utilization of water in factories, industrial plants, and the use of water as a ingredient or finished product. Twelve, recreational use, the utilization of water for swimming pools, bath houses, boating waters, kay, gok, courses, and other similar facilities in resorts and other places of creation. Thirteen, domestic use shall mean the diversion and distribution of water through pipelines to supply subdivisions and villages for domestic and household consumption. Fourteen, domestic use shall mean the utilization of water for drinking, washing, bathing, cooking, or other household needs, home, garden, and watering of clothes or domestic animals. Fifteen, beneficial use shall mean the utilization of water in the right amount during the period that the water is given for producing the benefits from which the water is appropriated. Sixteen, the IRR shall mean the Accrantine Rules and Regulations. Seventeen, Certificate of Public Confidence or Reciprocity, an authority issued by NWRB to qualified applicants engaged in the commercial and domestic use of water. Section A penalty violations of the provisions of this ordinance shall be penalized accordingly. A for violation of section 1A, 1C, 1H, and 1I of this ordinance. A fine of no less than 2,000 pesos and imposition of cease and cease order to stop its operation, which shall continue to take effect unless a status of compliance has been established or an imprisonment of not less than one month nor more than six months or both such imprisonment at the disposition of the board. B for violations of section 1E, 1B, 1G, and 1F of this ordinance. First offense, a fine of not less than 1,000 pesos. Ten, suspension of business operation for a period of one month or permanent cancellation of the business permit in case NWRB revokes the water permit. Second offense, a fine of not less than 2,000 pesos and suspension of business operation for two months or permanent cancellation of the business permit in case NWRB revokes the water permit. And third offense, a fine of not less than 3,000 pesos and outright permanent cancellation of the business permit. Another C for violation of section 1B, 1G, 1K, and 1N. Grand P issue once or renewal of business permit operation due in health unless such time applicant has complied. Section nine, if the offense is committed by a corporation, trust, firm, partnership, association, or aid to a legal person, the penalty shall be imposed upon the president, the grand manager, and other guilty officers of such corporation, trust, firm, partnership, association, or entity without adjudication for the finding of a stipulation against said legal person. If the offender is an alien, he should be deported after serving his sentence without further proceedings. Section ten, within close, all ordinances, rules, regulations, or parts thereof whose provisions are in conflict with or contrary to the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed, amended, or modified accordingly. Section eleven, if it will be, this ordinance shall take effect upon its removal. Eight, any comment? Uh, question?
Uh, okay, can you give me a second? Balik ka na sa libay, dyan ba, eh? Okay, so...
I feel good sa agenda, madam chair, sa kada water.
So, word? So, word, eh, wala, may patawag pa rin. In- informa kita si Juan. Si Juan. Si General Julius. Narangka, say na na. Okay, sige, so it's for being you. Na na na, sir. Ay.
Ay, madam Opok. So, Opok, madam chair.
Opok, na na ba, na na ba. Um, may dating na, may draft na. Resilvation, next time.
This is a man, yeah.
Prepare na ang draft namin, may ating need a couple, next.
Madam Chair, pre- na ko'y pumalala.
Ah, sige, sige, madam Chair, so, okay. Search ang mga, uh, EDU ma dyan mo, madam funding, ano ba, madam Chair, no? Yon, ako lang mga, na na. We will get the authority ka, market, yeah, na na. Ayun, ato, na ni mo, thirty three, para, each one each, parang kay, yun, kay, kay, pero, na, may, na, na, na. Thirty, may ta'ku niya, may rest, thirty na. Thirty, um, may ta'ku niya, ano, madam Chair, ato, ulang sa, si Kason, sa, bista, mo, kuapot. May ginahatu, yun, yung i-anudaan, for a, kuana, yun, every, parang kay, sa, bista, ano. For the start.
Madam Chair, na na, kung, na na. About so, bro, ibrebran kay, di, manggo, ni siya, inorba, ibrebran kay, bata, talisane na, ni siya, qualification, ugi, tsapungok, like, muna, to, ang, oh, is clean.
Ako'y inkar, siya, na, parang kay, na, okay, dami, siya, last one, pero, at least, isa, sa, isa, parang kay. Di, pasabog na. Texas, parang kay, pero, di na siya, mo, oblay. Kapasal siya, sa, screen, niya, Juan. Kedy, mo, gino, to, mga, kubulitan ng aplikante, kay, like, tara, so, at least, na, isa, sa, isa, parang kay. Isasunod, buse, di, madam. At least, na, isa, na, two E, gana, isa.
So, what, di, siya, nagta'ki, three slaps, kel, kiras, na, bro.
Uy, sige, di, 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 di. Short boy, bro.
Sige, sa, pasit, mo, tamag, ko, na, na, madam Chair.
Lumaga na, ang, Chair. Okay, yaro na, eh, short, gana, parang kay, ya, ha? Ayun, na, atong, pre- di, man, atong, pre- di, na, sa, Juan. Okay, so, ay, team I? Wala pa, tal, maramo, ay, hum, ni, gusong, ni, na, sa, es, niya, eh.
Hum, ni, kas, kada, gara, pre- di, na, siya, eh, yung, pangpasal, dito, to, ang, ratio. Atuk, kani, na, di, na, lang, ma, di, na, ma, kubude. Kui, di, kij, jen, kui, di, kij, ni, sa, madam Chair, to, kij.
Na, si, reference, gata, gela, reference, para, basahin. Para, mo, reference, sa, dini, na, sa, community, na?
Na, to, siya, eh, na, na, siya, o, na, sa, madam Chair, bro, um, chat, us, gulo, na, kas, pat, na, eh, si, bu, na, eh. So, want, eh, na, wala, ma, bigyan, sa, na, di, mo, to, to, di, sigla, di, pal, ob, siya, eh, muna, sa, bu, bro. Na, lagi, nag, kain, o, dina, siya, eh, yung, eh, di, pangpasal, eh, di, 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 kain, kap, kap, eh.
Okay, eh, di, 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 bossa. Eh, wow, ah, sa, dini. Merak, eh, bro.
Bili, madam Chair, eh, move this, uh, item, madam Chair, activity, to, di, na, di, bu, madam Chair. For sigla.
Second, eh, remarks, comments, objections, or ina, okay, three, related, the, eh. Uh, item J. Okay, so, third, final reading, ato, na, na, eh, kuwan, na, na.
Na, ay, grab, sa, madam Chair.
Okay. Sige, so, ani, na lang, na, may, kopya, wala? Wala?
Tegan, na, last week.
Na, last week, na. Uh, ato, may presenting, uh, GILIS, social structure, na, kibali, ano siya, so, sa office of, uh...
Vice Mayor.
Okay, office of the Vice Mayor. Uh, from the Vice Mayor, panao, na, siya, to, lokasyon, administrative, legislative, of security, decision. That, just, one, ha, oh, na, oh. Okay, so, as under administrative section, uh, na, existing, naman, eh, project secretary. Uh, so, legislative section. Na, i-lop, legislative staff assistant, one, with a salary grade six, and for security section, isaka, security guard, two, with a salary grade five, so, dali siya, is, mga, four terminos, nga, position. Dayon, ato, ta' sa, so, ang, may, mga, section, na, na, ang, ilaha, pa, na, mo, functions. Ato, ta' sa, mga, SD. Ah, ang, pala, bita, na.
Asa, separate, na, iba, siyang, papak, mga, jelas.
Okay, ato, ta' sa, Juan, atong, sa, mga, sanggol, ibay, member, no? Uh, simpa, ato, pana, ka, mga, SD members. So, under, inyo, um, sa, existing, na, to, manay, mga, ILS, ibutangan, na, siya, oh. Uh, ibutangan, na, kada, isa, para, mahi, mong, mga, four terminos, position, to, yap, oh. Pero, nga, na, na, ni, more, na, salary grade two.
Hi, uh, Juan, ang, guys, madam Chair, gano, salary grade two, na, siya. Salary grade six, is, kani, sa, uh, under, sa Vice Mayor, Legislative Assistant, one. Kani, salary grade six, na, sa'yo, na, ang, pag, salary grade. Salary grade two, na, siya, Vice.
Kani, sa, mga, ILS.
Legislative Employee, one.
Bro, pay, na, pay, one, na, eh, salary grade.
Salary grade two is for fourth class, step one.
Uh, third.
Fourth plus, na, na, ba, na.
One, pa, na, ats, no, four.
Ten thousand, seven hundred, uh, step one, ten thousand, seven hundred.
Ten thousand, atong salary grade six?
Salary grade six is thirteen. Ang, sa IS one is six. Five, five, la, ha.
Eight thousand, uh, wala, uh, so, ta', ta's, ako, do, Juan.
Salary grade two, sila, na, na.
Okay, then, then, happy, happy driver, ang, sa ISB. And then, sa office of the Secretary. Right, ma, di, apan, si, gulo, ni, uban, eh, apoli, ni, uban, na, apay, section, anymore? The example, so, what, man, to, no? Uh, under, GILIS, sa, sanggol, the Secretary, or, the sanggol, ian, ubo's, na, i, Board Secretary. And then, Administrative Division, diwa, na, i, Administrative Division, of Records and Legislative Division, so, diwa, ka, division. So, under, the Admin Administration. Na, apag, ILS, subsections, no, Admin Management Section, and Equipment and Digital Management. Okay, so, under Admin Management, na, Admin Assistant, four. Under, ni, Admin Assistant, two, Admin Eight, three. So, pero, ka, na, na, or, yellow, existing, na, na, siya. So, kani, Equipment and Digital Management, or, important, eh, bi, ano, uh, Admin Assistant, three, communi, what's, na, na, ko? Computer Operator, two, with salary grade nine, I think, number six, na, siya. And, na, under, ni, ano, po, ni, under, ni, Awania, Admin, eh, Administrative Eight, Three, or, Executive, Mar, Two. Dayon, pero, ka, na, kai, driver. Is, eh, pala, we, na, na, si, gulo, ba, eh, driver. Kani, uh, Administrative Eight, Three, or Driver, One. Is, sa, drivers, of, Juan. Kani, sa ISB, o, sa Office of the Vice Mayor, so, dependi, na, 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 o, yako. Okay, ro, in, Records, and Legislative Division, so, I mean, Records and Documentation Section. Na, ako, eh, mga, subsections, niya, Journal and Minutes, Archive and Legislative Jockey Section. So, under Journal and Minutes Section, Admin Assistant, five, or, Stino, Rapper, Rappic Reporter, three, na, siya. Tapos, na, i, Admin Assistant, Three, Stino Rapper, four?
Three, na.
Three, okay, and after, you, get, after, kai, Liberty Worker, two.
Nine.
Sige, uh, under Archive and Legislative Jockey Section. Na, i, Computer File, braviat, existing, na, na, siya. Admin Officer, Records Officer, Salary Grade Ten, existing, Admin Assistant, Two, Data Controller, Two, uh, existing. So, Archive and Legislative Jockey Section, mga, existing, ano, nga, i, ten. Uh, dito, na, siya, eh, uh, create Legislative Policy, bring Research, very important, eh, can, this researcher. Uh, Legal Assistant, Two, with a Salary Grade Twelve. And Local, Local Legislative Staff Assistant, Two, with Salary Grade Eight. And Lastly, existing Admin Eight, uh, Six, or, the, Data, Eight, Over, with the Salary Grade Six. Mga, to, any comment? Sige, sige, Juan. Ayun, na, kanta, alay, Juan. Basta, important, eh, para, sa, Juan, kap, gune, eh, researcher, or, kadin, digital. So, comply, may, gela, to, requirements, ako, mo, wala, ko, spoke, po, yun, na, na, the Board Secretary, eh. Malay official takeover, sa, eh, absence, no?
Madam Chair.
Yes, honorable, oh, na.
Ako, lang, ibalik, madam Chair, eh, klaro, lang, ah, magcreate, na, na, niya. Uh, sa Office of the Vice Mayor, is, na, ta' to, Lokal Legislative Staff Assistant, One, i, Team Three, Salary Grade Six. Dayon, Security Guard, Salary Grade Five, Legislative, Four, Driver, Two, uh, Salary Grade Four. And then, sa... Sa, 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 Juan, the, the, Office of the Secretary. Alam, siya, na, ta' is, uh, ano, ano, ang, rabbak, um, kani, niya. So, uh, Democratic, Three, Liberty Worker, Two, Salary Grade Seven. I mean, Salary Grade Three, uh, Democratic, Three, Driver, One, and then, two, eh, two, ni, uh, Salary Grade Three, gab, siya. Then, then, Assistant, Five, Stino Rapper, eh, two, three. Salary Grade Eleven, and then, Assistant, Three, Liberty Worker, Two. Salary Grade Three, and Local Assistant, Two, Salary Grade Twelve. And Local Legislative Staff Assistant, Two, Salary Grade Eight, so, uh, ang, bak, um, magcreate, ni, siya, na, na, eh, na, items. Position. But...
There, na, section, na, mag-abolish, sa...
Driver.
Sa transitory positions, sila, eh, na, pa, mga, abolish. But, di, na, di, to, ka, pa.
Di, na, po.
Pattern, mang, gini, siya, sa province.
Ah.
Wala, wala, eh, uh, mission, di, to, ka, province, po, na, eh, abolish.
Sige, okay, so, what's the defer?
About the, uh, there.
The, the best, na, na, is, Juan, kena, subject for, ang, giving. Apergajet, cut, and appropriation. Yeah, a, na, na, niya, creation.
Creation, ready, competition, about, uh...
Sige, so, any motion, panama, in, ma.
Madam Chair.
Honorable, to, oh.
Drop, ordinance, number, ID, four, the, seven, three, I move, round, third, the, final, approval, madam Chair.
Sige.
First. Second, then, remarks, comments, objections, okay, hearing, nine, so, all are in favor? Uh, your vote approve the, uh, motion. Okay, so, uh, ordinance, ID, four, that, reprise, now, final, uh, is, now, final, eh, approved. Okay, so, item B?
Madam Chair.
Honorable, to, oh.
I move, madam Chair, round, third, the, final, approval, Local Health, Court, Resolution, Number, zero, zero, two, the, seven, three, eighty-four. Local Health, Court, Solution, Number, zero, zero, three, the, seven, three, eighty-four, madam Chair.
Second. Okay, uh, Julius, carded, any remarks, comments, objections, okay, hearing, nine, all are in favor? Uh, your vote, uh, resolution, or, di, na, or, eh, required? Dini, siya, or, di, na, sir. Okay, na, resolution, resolution, resolution. Uh, sige, na, mo, may, gi, required, lagi, pa, ay, oh.
Okay, ma, si, madam Chair, case, paring, man, so, su, ani, di, man, sa...
Tal, di, na, to, general. Please, eh, so, ABC, matters?
Yes, honorable, ah. Masarangan, honorable, Chair, atong, uh, blue, sportive, mga, kapitan, last, to, member, three, madam, madam Chair, eh. Successful, yun, ang, di, mahiga, eh, mga, makasis.
Napay, na, napil, ni, ma, eh, ISB.
Bibo, gita, eh, oh, eh, 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 eh. Ako, uh, kami, mag, mga, EBC, na, sanggol, na, ato, na, task, military board, yung, board, na, last. Unang, halos, gud, na, na, ato, kami, ang, so, ako, gud, na, madam Chair, na, UCT, yun, ah, u, ipa, ana, ba, na, detent, iba, kay, captain. Di, tabang, ngitung, lima, ngayon, is, yun, nang, has, di, la, 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 CBO, best, uh, yo, otong, na, kita, kina, po, ang, ang, grupo, baka, sus, di, pa, di, bu. Di, na, ni, to, na, madam Chair, eh. Last, usi, di, la, gabi, eh, na, plaster, pa, kau, iba, pasin, lang, ibang, as, eh, na, dakin, eh, yep. Sa, ilang, recognition, na, na, lip, eh, eh, okay, ang, iba, to, di, board, na, ko, kan, last, eh, yung, eh, eh. Oh, oh, kita, na, ko, ngayon, eh, edition, edition, one, na, tradition, bito, ko, bito, ko, ah, edition, edition, sa, tila, mga, na, lip, eh, is, la. Board, sipit, na, na, ni, mo, po, po, eh, di, pa, kay, kau, ang, kahir, kahir, to, tila, dito, na, to, ni, mo, ibad, na, sa, feminist, along, eh, dito, along, parir. Hangsa, na, ko, ka, edition, edition, ang, di, mo, lo, eh, dito, otong, di, di, bay, pa, lagi, sige, na, na, nga, na, ko, sunod, madam Chair. Sunod, mga, pin, eh. Ako, eh, na, eh, ko, eh, ma, eh, am, eh. Then, that's, honorable, Chair, eh, ako, eh, eh, aung, uh, mati, ngiting, bora, eh, sa, yun, eh, tay, di, oh, mga, to, ah.
Sige, eh, kaya, eh, si, ha, di, na, bezak, kay, yun.
Kay, bl, eh.
Successful, kay, yun.
Eh, di, bu, ager, gud, na, na, eh.
Okay.
Uli, to, kana, eh, si, yun, mga, risk, yun, na, iting, kana, eh, tumpur, yu, kip, ah, tong, napagbunta, du.
Sige, uh, SK, matters?
So, SK, matters, was, is, successful, ang, pagjoin, sa Youth Congress, uh, authority, eh, the, skater, was, nakapil, eh. Uh, pasarangan, hindi, sa, successful, pag-invent, sa, manok, eh, eh. Uso, hindi, sa, nataasan, with, uh, uh, coordinate, sa, bang, eh, captains, o, sa, officials, na, uh, papak, o, martial, or, tining, batay, sa, eh. Sa, Portwood, guys, na, pa, may, eh, po, yun, na, na, may, uh, event, sa Federation, sa, tu, na, which, is, na, may, Kennedy, ship, training, eh. Wala, kami, kasi, pagdate, pero, kasi, na, mo, yung, eh, sa, Portwood, and then, BBC, hole, sumo, to, na, eh.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, SK, Chair, uh, honorable, si, Galbaga, so, I think, matters?
Uh, madam Chair. Na, may, eh, activity, sa, uh, Laba Council, uh, 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 can, 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 si, me, oh, eh, as, eh, san, to, member, ordinance. Have you, eh, uh, san, eh, super, at, muda, sa, eh, oh, oh, oh. So, uh, ang, video, ni, ma, Chair, di, na, na, sa, pag, o, kami, to, na, eh, so, number, oh, oh, pili, na, na, eh.
Sige, okay, na, eh, pin, ma, sana, kana, local ordinance, municipal?
Uh, municipal, uh, uh.
English, Ababincan?
Hindi, Ababincan.
Honorable, si, Tato?
Ati, yun, Chair, PCL, matters, madam Chair, uh, na, i, year, eh, PCL, uh... Na, pal, luka, na, December, three, to, five, madam Chair, no, sa, sa, Manila, so, um, at, eh, eh, madam Chair, sa, PCL, no? And then, uh, in line, sa, atong, na, pinding, madam Chair, na, pal, luka, sa, PCL, Congress, sa, province. Uh, may, meeting, si President, Lumida, na, mo, urus, na, na, para, sa, final, schedule, eh. Di, na, eh, magka-process, sa, Manila, unless, na, di, na, ma, liquidate, on, reviews, na, na, Juan, mo, sa, mo, magul, so.
Dun, na, eh, tata, karamo, activity, to, uh, province?
Na, hay, eh, pindi, President, Lumida, ako, po, eh, may, si, one, legacy, po, para, may, ta, sa, Juan, sa, division, eh. Pero, ni, na, siya, na, basic, positin, si, gum, man, sa, pal, luka, sa, province, eh, finally, eh. Try, mo, na, eh, madam Chair, na, mag, realign, para, si, eh, eh, ticket, po, eh, madam Chair, ang gusto, as, um, possible, mga, po, eh, ticket, eh, para, eh, eh, sa, link, na, eh, um, um, sumangat, video, para, eh, para, eh, eh, pagticket, kana, na, na, eh, sa, uh, na, eh, 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 eh. Thank you, madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, honorable, to, oh, okay, so, eh...
Madam Chair.
Yes, honorable.